Assistant Treasurer. Assistant Treasurer Taylor Harris.
Here.
We have some members present and some on Zoom. You are hereby given notice that members of the Rockton Housing Authority are called to meet in a special session on Tuesday, August 6, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. in the Mayor Bill Carpenter Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, 4542, first floor, Rockton Mass, 02301. I'm going to quickly read off the Governor's memo. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and staff emergency, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public parties are temporarily relieved from the Open Meeting Law requirements that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public. The longest measures are taken to ensure public access access to the body deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That was extended to April 1, 2021, extended again till July 1, 2022, extended again July 15, 2022, extended again by Governor Charlie Baker to March 31, 2023, extended again to March 31, 2025 by Governor Haley. This meeting slash hearing of the Rockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance, the in-op participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the original broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and/or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download Zoom Cloud Meeting App in the App Store or at www.zoom.us at 11:00 a.m. on August 6, 2024. Click on Join a Meeting and enter meeting ID number 82455729366, passcode 383217, or use the link http://zoom.us/i/82855729366. You may also join by calling conference line at 1-646-558-8656 at 11:00 a.m. on August 6, 2024, and enter meeting ID 82855729366, passcode 383217, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on appropriate time and manner for public comments during this meeting. Could you all please rise if you can and remove your hats and silence your cell phones for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item Run One, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. Item Two, appointment of homeownership leasing agent.
Uh, Mr. uh, Pluck is on his annual vacation up in New Hampshire, so I'll be filling in for him. I do see that uh, Mrs. Barney just uh, joined us. I'll do the presentation and uh, Miss Barney, if you would like to say anything, please uh, jump in. We do have the candidate here, Leda Pereira. And am I saying that correct, Leda?
Correct, Leda.
Leda Pereira. So Leda, um, we have an opening in the Rental Assistance Department with the uh, promotion of Crystal Gera to office manager. We have advertised a committee of Crystal Gera, Mr. Cooks and uh, Miss Barney uh, sat in on the interviews. Um, uh, Ms. Pereira.
In progress.
Shoulders above the other candidates. In fact, if I was to meet Chris Lane Body, uh, and we're just wearing a little technical issue here, I would just say cancel. Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, the the screen's telling us we might have problems with the microphone, but it looks like we're fine. Um, the, in fact, if I uh, the story is correct, Miss Barney, you said right after the interview, can we move her right to her desk? Uh, so.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I was very impressed.
Very, very impressed, which is, which is wonderful. She has um, a lot of credentials. Uh, she's coming in. She's been working in the private sector, but working with HUD money, so she knows about recertification. She also knows about low income tax credits. And the thing that's most attractive to Ms. Pereira is she lives on the 1100 block of Montello Street and can walk to 1090 Main Street. About four minutes was it, Leda?
Yes, four minutes.
Four minutes. So it's very close. Um, she's a woman who is, has goals. We spoke about those, so I'm hoping she has a long and fruitful career here. Um, but I was impressed with her in my interview also. And Miss Barney, would you like to say anything else?
Well, like I said, I'm, I was very impressed by Ms. Leda, and I can't wait for her to join our team.
Thank you.
Okay, as I had sent out a message when we sent out the package to you, we wanted to get it to you before the weekend. Uh, we had not had a start date. Um, Ms. Pereira has given us one, October, uh, August 26th, uh, would be her start date, allowing her to give her uh, employer appropriate notice.
We need a motion in a second. Item Two.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Robert, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to appoint Leda Pereira of Rockton, the position of homeownership lease leasing agent effective August 26, 2024, at the step one rate of $45,873 per annum. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
No. No.
Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Tebow. Give a follow-up ad in your 12. Uh, if you want to uh.
You got one more coming in?
Oh, you, yes, yes, okay.
Leda, could you hang on? We got one more person coming in. They just want to read off a statement.
Sure.
For both of you.
Okay, sure.
Item Three, appointment of asset manager two, except for being in the package, Mr. Tebow.
If I could ask Mr. uh, Shidi to speak on this, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tebow. Uh, Mr. Pluck is on vacation this week. I, could I just start by saying that the disposition is, was the impetus of the catalyst behind uh, the recent realignment of the asset managers that took effect June 1st. It uh, comes about after two longtime uh, asset managers are no longer with us. It'll include Hillside Village, Rainbow Terrace, uh, Crescent Court, Scattered Sites, and the Anwood. So the, the position was advertised on Indeed, Mass Narrow, the website. Uh, we had four very strong candidates came forward that were interviewed by myself and Mr. Pluck. And uh, at the end of it all, if you all remember back in December, you appointed Zemara Calderon Rivera as the My Tech Affordable Housing Manager, and I'm happy to present uh, her to you today in hopes that she can become my new asset manager two.
If I could add to that, uh, this is a promotion uh, for Mrs. Amara. She came in in January. Uh, it was a position that was vacant for quite some time. In fact, Buna Campbell in her other position would come in and spend a half day just to hold things together. Uh, but she came in and she uh, straightened things out, got it well organized, worked closely with the other staff members, and over a very short period of time has become team here at the uh, the Housing Authority. Uh, she takes pride in her work. Uh, she knows what she's doing. And um, I think she will be a great addition to a public housing asset management department.
We need a motion and a second. Item Three.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion to appoint Zemara Calvin Rivera of Dedham for the position of asset manager two, effective August 12, 2022, 2024, at the 2024 step one annual rate of $64,711. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries. Let me read this statement off of both of you. Let me thank you for wanting to work at Rockton Housing Authority, one of the best jobs in Rockton, in my opinion. We own 2,100 apartments in Rockton and administer, administer over 2,500 rentals, assistant eight, uh, uh, 2,500 section eight project. This is not an easy job. We, the board of commissioners and the executive team, put our residents first. They are our number one priority. Without them, we don't need me, this board, buildings, or the staff. Please remember to treat our residents with respect. We also say that anyone can have a bad day, be a little sharp, or argumentative for no apparent reason. If this should happen to you, please smile and walk away. Don't argue. We can all strive to, to be a better person. If you can do this, you will go far in this agency. I am very glad to meet you and welcome you to the team. The board meets once a month in this room on many different subjects. Please feel free to attend any one of these items if you're pre-attached with the deal. And thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So Ms. Pereira, if Mr. Pluck was here and you were in the room, you'd be shuffled off to Human Resources right now. But it looks like you're in town. I know you're at work, so you can be excused to go back to your work. I'm sure you did this on your break.
All right. Thank you so much, guys.
Both, both of you have very impressive backgrounds, and we're very thankful to have you.
Thank you.
To the board members on Zoom, you will see CMR in a couple of minutes because she'll be presenting a contract for you, so.
Okay.
You can come up and shake our hand. You can't shake her hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Four, approval of addendum number three, architect slash engineer services contract, Campello High Rise, Section 18 project. Item C in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Barrett to speak on that, please.
Good morning, board members. Um, with, with DWA Architect's um, contract assignment and the change in the project scope from renovation for construction of three new buildings, there's triggered many code compliance issues, such as site stormwater, event relocation, environmental, and et cetera. Um, also with this scope change, project has changed from a single phase to three phases, and now includes the preparation of three separate drawing packages, which will facilitate the phase uh, occupancy of the site and each building is brought online. The addendum three increases the design fee by not exceed $40,920, which is dependent on the amount of meetings required by the city's permanent process. We recommend a motion to approve of this addendum number three to BWA Architecture and a not exceed amount of $10,920 at Campello High Rise Section 18 project.
If I could add to that, this is a $10 million contract before uh, uh, the forty, uh, forty thousand dollars, but very, very small percentage. It is related to uh, a number of meetings that the city has now added to the, the process. That, that's their process. We don't know if each one of those will be held, so we've delineated each meeting and said, okay, if you, if we have this meeting, you'll be paid. Don't have it, you won't be.
Knowing um, uh, my environment.
Site, site review.
Yeah, site reviewing. So just, and they have multiple, so they need go there, and then you gotta come back, and that's why. Get through a wood, and then water there, conservation.
Is this due to the set, having three buildings, so each site that they're building on is, got their own specs?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it has to be divided up. That was according to uh, the state and the people doing the tax credit, saying we can't fund it in one phase. We have to do it three times.
Okay, okay.
We need a motion in a second. Item Five.
So moved.
Second.
Given to you.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve addendum three to the contract with BWA Architecture Incorporated for the not to exceed amount of $40,920 for the Campello High Rise Section 18 project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item Five, approval change order number three, creative place making project Kennedy Drive, project 667 dash two, exhibit D in the package.
The next three items have to do with the community room at Kennedy Drive. It's under the creative place making grant. It's a change order, substantial completion and completion. It's a state bureaucracy that we're going to hear. Other than the change order, the change order is something that is um, is significant. And then another way that the state works, they issue orders that are not complete, and then they have a change as of the law, so. Yes, yes, okay. If I could ask Mr. Barrett to.
Again, below a number of senior or authority requesting items that have been put to Berika Construction, the general contractor at Kennedy Drive Creative Place Make. After a view of Berika uh, change order proposal in the amount of $27,630.19 for this work, capital improvement, the authority architect and the construction advisor for EO HLC is deemed it to be reasonable and in industry standards. We would recommend to accept change order number three in the amount of $27,630.19 on Berika Construction of 219 Walnut Street, Suite B, Westbridge Water Mass, for the Kennedy Drive Creative Place Making Project.
I, I do want to point out, it's only a 2% increase in it. I, but, and I, I do also want to give you an idea. So the um, laundry, you know, the main room lighting, this is something that when the state puts together their uh, specs to put out the bid and keep it at minimal. When we put the lighting in and we saw, this isn't adequate. We asked, can we put more lighting here to make this a better place, space for our uh, our residents? And the, Mr. Barry does this along with the state uh, uh, Mr. Keating, and got it approved. So the state's paying for it, but it's just a process that we go through to get it done.
Correcting, that's my turn, yeah.
It's open, yeah.
Oh, it is open? It's okay.
I was there uh, on Monday, I believe it was, Monday or Friday, and I met with uh, Mr. Conner, Lieutenant President, who's happy as can be, thanked me over and over and over. So we, we do have to have a little.
Nicely done. Good job. Give him a clock.
Everyone has a cell phone, a car phone.
Need a clock in the community room. You don't have to nail it to the wall. You can post a note.
We need a motion and a second. Item Five.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Kraft. Motion to approve, motion is to approve change order number three in the amount of $27,630.19 to the contract with Berika Construction of Westbridge Auto Mass for the Kennedy Drive Creative Place Making Project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries. Item Six, approval of certificate of substantial completions, creative place making project Kennedy Drive, project 667 dash two, exhibit E in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Barrett to speak on that.
On May 17, 2024, Bridgette C. Almore Architects, the architectural firm representative, has already deemed that Berika Construction Incorporated the general contractor performing the work on Kennedy Drive Community Center Creative Place Making Project to be substantially complete. Punctual item has been informed and is attached to the project. Uh, we would recommend to accept the substantial completion as of May 17, 2024, from Berika Construction Incorporated of 219 Walnut Street, Suite B, Westbridge Water Mass, for the 667 dash two Kennedy Drive Community Center Creative Place Making Project, Capel 044096.
We need a motion and a second. Item Six.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept the substantial completion as of May 17, 2024, from Berika Construction Incorporated of 219 Walnut Street, Suite B, Westbridge Water Mass for the 667 dash two Kennedy Drive Community Center Creative Place Making Project, Capel number 044096. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries. Item Seven, approval of certificate of final completion, creative place making project Kennedy Drive, project 667 dash two, exhibit F in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Barrett to speak on that.
On July 31, 2024, Bridgette C. Almore Architects, the architectural firm representative, has already deemed that Berika Construction Incorporated the general contractor performing the work at 667 dash two Kennedy Drive Community Center Creative Place Making Project to be complete as per the financial suffocation stated December 28, 2022. All required, both our documents, warrants, deed, and as-built have been received, and all punctual items have been completed. We would recommend to accept the final provision as of July 31, 2024, from Berika Construction Incorporated of 219 Walnut Street, Suite B, Westbridge Water Mass for the 667 to Kennedy Drive Community Center Creative Place Making Project, Capel number 044096.
We need a motion and a second. Item Seven.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Kraft. Motion is to accept the final completion as of July 31, 2024, from Berika Construction Incorporated of 219 Walnut Street, Suite B, Westbridge Water Mass for the 667 dash two Kennedy Drive Community Center Creative Place Making Project Capel number 044096. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome. Item Eight, approval of contract extension, integrated pest management, exhibit T in the package.
So Mr. Pluck is out, and Mr. Christopher is out. So Mr. Shidi is pinching for all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow, commissioners. We entered into a, an agreement with uh, Burgess Pest Management for our integrated pest management back in August of 2021 for a three-year period. We do have the option to extend that for one year, which we are asking the board to do it this time. The, the benefits to it is Burgess has a little bit of a rough start for the last couple of years. I think they've done a, a really good job. Uh, it'll keep it moving smoothly, and we'll pay 2021 prices for another year. So it's to our advantage to move forward with this.
And I also want to add, why we do this? So we do a three-year contract because we don't want to do procurement every year because it's quite a, a lift. We do the extensions with the board's approval. In case we're not happy with the work that they're doing, we can just say, no, we're not bringing it out. We're going out to bid again. And as Mr. uh, Shidi said, we are happy with um, the services they're providing. It's a very difficult job. Any resident who has passed is not happy. And, and, well, I shouldn't say any resident, but um, and, but they have been very responsive to what we've done.
It's urgent for everything. It's about any, any, they don't do wildlife, I don't believe, so, but that, everything else. Some squirrels, rats, and that type of stuff.
Pretty good for all.
We need a motion and a second. Item Eight.
Yep.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Carol Beach, it's Taylor.
Okay.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to extend the integrated pest management contract between Burgess Pest Management of Westbridge Water Mass for one more year beginning September 1, 2024, and ending September 1, 2025. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Just one question on the date, um, the dead ends August 33.
It should, it should end on August 30 or 31, which, which uh, how many days in August? 30, 31, 31?
So if you could change that ending date to the August 31, 2025?
Yep.
Any questions or discussions on the motion?
So the bedbugs are improving?
So we have, when we learn about bedbugs early, we have great success. Uh, when we don't, um, it's much more difficult. And when we have cooperation, they have great success, but we don't, it's much more difficult. We do a annual visit regardless. We do an inspection, uh, once a year, is it?
Once a year.
Once a year, we go into every single apartment, all twenty, uh, 2,000 of them, to do inspections for bedbugs. And then obviously, we, we respond as people call. Uh, a number one issue is people don't call. Um, and then we discover them. Usually when the neighbor gets one, then we go in and figure out where it's coming from. Anything else?
No, it's.
But it, we will have, I was told by an entomologist 15 years ago, I didn't believe him, that we will have bedbugs forever. Uh, since they've done away with uh, DDT, which was, which is a very caustic uh, uh, chemical to the environment. Uh, what we're doing now is we get rid of them, but you'll get them somewhere else and, and pick them up. Obviously, when people are going to visit people, they're bringing them in. Uh, but we, I think, I know we have a very good system, uh, because we've tested it out against everybody else's and.
Is, is bedbugs, can they come out of the drain as well?
No, no, they, they're, they're not, uh.
They're not roach.
Drain, drain flies come out of the uh, drain, and if you have a little bit of moisture in there, and it sits there for a while, that can happen. Those are pretty easy to get rid of. Bedbugs want to be close to their, their host, who is, is the person. So they're usually, what, what do they tell them? How many feet away from the bed or the chair or?
They're usually within a couple of feet.
Yeah.
If, if you're in that chair, they're probably going to stay in the chair, in the bed. They, or you're coming, they're going to wait till you're there, so.
Friendly.
Yeah, they are, they are.
And, and human blood.
This happened in uh, Italy, not to do with the Olympics. The bus, uh, school that rental the bus, who tore in the door, picked the kid, and all, all. Fix it, get it, uh, and all, fuck on, that one. Back to this country.
Yes, no, it's, it started, they said, uh, the original uh, sort of invasion, uh, how they migrated was from the Iberian Peninsula, Portugal and Spain. And it was business travelers coming to New Jersey and New York. And in, at one time we were following a map and you just see it go across the country, into Canada, into Mexico.
But they can't go into people and buses and.
Oh, yeah.
Even like people.
Yeah. I have a problem with some of the units we treat. People have walkers and wheelchairs. They go out with their walker, wheelchair. That's where the bugs are. They bring them right back in as well.
Yeah.
We need a roll call, Mr. Chivo, item nine, item eight.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item nine, approval of contact, contract extension, security services, Certificate in the package. Chivo.
If I could ask Mr. Shidi to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chivo. Uh, very similar to uh, the integrated pest management, Jet Security entered into a contract with us in August of twenty twenty, with three years. Uh, they have done i- in my estimation of a very good job of, uh. I can't remember pre- previous contract that we would always have open shifts. We would have shuffling guards to cover properties. I can't remember a shift not being filled by the current uh, security for on Jet Security. Your owner is very responsive. Uh, we had a meeting last Brat, last Thursday at Campello with the resident leaders, basically the rap committee and Commissioner Roberts can tell you that uh, Andres and now either the principal owner of Jet Security was there and uh, he listened and he was back to meet with his guards that night to address the issues and that's just the what we've found over the three years for them. They've been very responsive. And again, of the benefit to us is that we stay at twenty twenty-one rates for an additional year.
One question, where is Jet Security in working? Dedham, Dedham. Dedham. We need a motion and a second, item nine.
So moved.
Carol Roberts, Peter Taylor, you want the second?
Our second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion to, to the executive director be authorized to extend the agreement between Brockton Housing Authority and Jet Security LLC for one year beginning August first, twenty twenty-four for an amount not to exceed five hundred forty thousand dollars for the same terms and conditions of the third year of the August first, twenty twenty-one security service contract. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Chivo.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item ten, water contract, landscape maintenance services. Affordable housing portfolio, Exhibit in the package.
If I could ask uh, Ms. Caldera to speak on this, please.
Morning.
You're speaking, morning?
Yes, I am. First time, a little nervous.
Okay.
All right, good morning. Um, we are submitting for approval for the landscaping contract for affordable housing performed for a two-year contract. Um, uh, we have evaluated two proposals that we have received along with Mr. Howard, Mr. Papa, myself. We followed the legal process by creating the proposal package and both, both submitted a proposal online with, along with Bernice and women's health. Um, and we have did all the evaluation and Mr. Papa approved Fairway Landscaping for the new contract. They are already our current contractors. Um, we are pleased with their work and we would like your approval.
You give it another minute?
Thank you.
We need a motion and a second, item ten.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Craft. Motion that the Brockton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners authorize Executive Director Thomas T. Chivo to enter into a three-year contract for landscape services and maintenance with Fairway Lawn Care Corporation, C V A Fairway Landscaping for landscape maintenance services for the affordable housing property in accordance with the proposal submitted effective August first, twenty twenty-four. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Chivo.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes, sorry, my finger's not quick enough.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
I got a question to give. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Item eleven, we need a motion and a second, with a German. From anybody?
Uh, so moved, motion, yeah, let's do it.
Need a second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts.
Hello.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call, Mr. Chivo.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, needing to run.
I'd like to quickly thank board members for coming in for a special meeting. We can't get our business done without you. Um, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Yes.
Bye-bye.